Hey, Chorin.
Hi.
When you ring the doorbell, I guess it's...
Hello. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. I'm Caitlin Idesness, the Senior Communications Coordinator with the City of Edina. If you have not already done so, please silence your cellphone. The council chambers is equipped with a hearing assistance system. If you'd like to borrow a receiver, please let me know. If you'd like to address the commission regarding an agenda item, please do so when the chair asks for public testimony. If you'd like to raise an issue that's not on the agenda, you may do so during the community comment of tonight's meeting. During public hearings, the chair will ask for community comment after city staff members and proponents make their presentations. When addressing the commission, please stand at one of these two podiums and speak clearly into the microphone. You may stand here if you have visual material to present, and I'll hand you a microphone like the one I'm speaking into. When you come up to make your remark, please clearly state your full name, including your address and your unit or apartment number. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on Edina TV channel 813 for Comcast subscribers and channels 1236 for CenturyLink. It's also being broadcast live on Facebook, and you can view the video afterwards on our website, edinamn.gov. Thank you.
We're just waiting for the green light. There it is. Hi. Okay, so welcome to the Wednesday, January 29th Planning Commission meeting. Is this on? Doesn't sound like it's on. Anyway, so first thing is roll call.
Commissioner Douglas.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Nemirov.
Here.
Commissioner Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
Present.
Chair Olson.
Present. Next, we have approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes or edits to the agenda? Not hearing any. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of meeting minutes from January 8th, 2020. Any comments, edits? Did you? That's okay.
I'll move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have community comment, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wants to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. You can come up and present something. Not seeing any, we'll move on to the public hearings. So the first public hearing is preliminary plat with variances at 5928 Ashcroft Avenue. Carrie.
Okay. Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Our first request is a subdivision, as mentioned, with variances in the 5900 block of Ashcroft. Property is located just west of Concord School, north of 60th. So it's an existing 100-foot-wide lot that was originally platted as two 50-foot-wide lots. Original property owner purchased two lots and built one home over the two lots and combined those two 50-foot-wide lots. Want to note that, let's see, this next graphic shows it well. So the area east of Concord, north of 60th, all of this area was originally platted with 50-foot-wide lots. So this is on that far southwest border of that 50-foot-wide platted area. To the south of 60th, as you can notice here, the lots are larger. To the west, across Concord, the lots are also larger. Now, the way we calculate the minimum lot size in Edina, we take the median of all properties within 500 feet. So the circle indicates the area that we look at for determining the minimum lot size. It's the median lot width area and depth of all single-family lots within that 500-foot radius. So you see a large portion is the original 50-foot-wide platted area, but it's also taking into account lots that were larger. So with this request, the median is just over 8,000 square foot feet. That's the minimum lot size. Lot depth is 135 feet, and width is 66 feet. So both these lots, as proposed, require variances, both in lot width and lot area. So this is a look at the existing home on the site. Again, it's a 100-foot-wide lot. To the north is a 50-foot-wide lot, and to the south. What the applicant's proposing to do would be to tear down that existing single-family home and build two new single-family homes. There is a 10-foot easement along the north lot line. The applicant revised their plans to indicate, to show the house outside of that easement area. They would do drainage swales to the west side of the property to control runoff. Should this plat be approved, individual house plans would be reviewed at the time of a building permit. So over the last 15 years, we've had a number of requests like this, essentially reestablishing original plats. The map on the screen indicates, we've had 13, 14 of them in those last 15 years, and we've approved, the city has approved some, and the city's also denied some. The properties with the red stars, those indicate ones that have been approved, and the ones that do not, 10, 5, 2, 6, and 7, those were denied. In cases where the city has denied this type of a request, within that block, there has been a variety of lot sizes, kind of similar to what we're looking at here, where there's a number of lots that were originally combined and one house put on them, or a combination thereof. So the site that we're looking at today is right in here. And notice that here, this one that's indicated 7 and 9, is right around the corner from the subject property. It's on the corner of Concord and 60th. So in 2012, the property owner requested a subdivision, similar to what's requested here this evening, and the city denied it. The same property owner came back three years later in 2015, and it was approved. To give you a little indication of the voting at that time, staff recommended against it, recommended denial. The Planning Commission recommendation was for approval, but on a 5 to 4 vote, so it was close, and the city council approved it on a 3 to 2 vote. So very close, but nonetheless was approved. So primary issue for consideration, are the findings for the variance met? So a case can be made for both approval and denial here, similar to what we've seen. So staff has outlined alternatives within your staff report for approval and denial. In this case, though, staff is leaning toward the approval, and that's really based on that recent subdivision that was approved within this original plat on the corner here, reestablishing the original 50-foot-wide plat. So with that, the findings that staff has made for approval would be, again, that it reestablishes that original 50-foot-wide plat, similar to most lots within this block, similar to the two lots to the west would be 50-foot-wide lots, to the north and the south. The practical difficulty is caused by the original property owner that purchased two lots and built one house on them. We believe that it's reasonable in the context of this neighborhood. Again, the majority of properties are 50-foot-wide lots, so we believe it's reasonable in that context. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to those findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Are there questions? Go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you, Carrie. I'll just maybe have you repeat. So on Ashcroft between 59th and 60th, the block, probably either side, those were all originally platted as 50-foot lots?
Yes. Both sides of the lot.
Right.
Of the street.
Okay. Then, the drawing you had showing the proposed dwellings. Okay. We're not really looking at any part of the project. I mean, we're looking at the lot split.
Correct.
Right? But what they're showing, would those proposed dwellings need any special variances? Or, I mean, they conform?
To our setback regulations.
For that?
Yep.
Right? Okay.
Yeah. So no variances requested for individual structures.
Okay. So we're not looking at the structures?
Just to create the lots.
But we're being asked about splitting the lot?
Correct.
From what its original plating was?
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sue.
Carrie, when you refer to the plating, that was actually done in 1950s?
Yeah. I didn't check the original date, but yeah, generally in that time.
And this whole area, pretty much, once it was platted, kind of developed around the same time. I imagine those lots were sold off, and the homes were kind of built around that, within, you know, so many years that area developed. If we had plating from, say, the late 1800s, would we still be looking to enforce those plating guidelines if we had never had this, you know, 1950s plating? In some cases, the original plating was farmland. So if someone came back today and said, "I'd like to turn it back to farmland," would we be looking at that as a reasonable request?
If someone wanted to combine all their lots and tear the houses, yeah, it's hard to, I'm not sure what the question is there.
Well, my point is, is that in some ways, the plating was specific to that time, and I know that you have raised the point that this is just a case of returning it to the original plat. I think that many of the properties, when they were sold, developed, were sold, and an owner might have chosen to buy it as two lots and build a single house. That was the choice of the time. So it became a double-wide lot with a single home. So I guess the question is, how long does that stay in effect? So let's say somebody comes back later and says, you know, "This used to be a single-family home. I want to tear down these two houses now and go back to a single-family."
To one lot?
Yeah.
So that's possible. You could do that today. You could purchase two 50-foot-wide lots with two houses on them, tear that down, combine the lots, and build one house.
Okay. So I guess my point is that the fact that it was platted that way in some ways is irrelevant because, you know, someone could easily buy two lots and say just what you said. So we kind of have to look at it in the scope of it's one request coming at this point in time, regardless of what happened in the past, this is what they want to do.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say that's fair.
And then I had a question about, I think you had shown sort of the way it was going to be developed on the site plan. A lot of them now are saying, "When we do go to, we're going to divide it up, we're going to handle the storm drainage by using these rain gardens." We've seen it frequently enough, and over my course of six years being on the commission, I'm sure many of these homes have been built. Do we have any data on whether or not they work, or how successful they've been?
Question for our engineering department, how they follow up on that. I know they check, you know, say this was a building permit plan, and they've proposed that rain garden. Before any certificate of occupancy is given for that home, it's verified in the field that it has been constructed, and then how they follow up on that in the future, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. It might be interesting to collect some data on that, because I think right now, what we're really concerned about is the change. If we know it works now, and we split it into two, do we really know how well that works? So just a comment. Thank you.
In plan set, we believe it works. It's making sure no one alters that plan over time without the city being aware of it.
Great. Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you, Carrie. So is the applicant here, would they like to speak?
Right. I live at 3122 117th Avenue in Blaine, Minnesota. I wanted to thank Carrie, Liz, for putting in all the time for this subdivision application. It takes a lot of time and patience, you know, especially with how long it takes to get in review some of these elevations, as well as the surveys. You know, and if I can answer one of your questions on the rain garden. So actually, City of Edina does a great job. We've been building houses for 19 years. City of Edina is the only one that comes back in the spring and measures the time it takes for the water to drain out of those rain gardens. So it does hold up a complete certificate of occupancy, so we do deal with temp certs in the meantime. So congrats to you guys. They do a great job. Forward thinking, when you're looking at the lot splits, you're right, going back to a plat map that was done in the 50s, it's hard to determine what's right for the market today. What's right for the market today is determined by the market, the home sales. Edina keeps their elevated household incomes, their schools, because of relo buyers coming in, there are higher wages. They are looking for this type of home. We have listed the property for sale, and it's disheartening to see the responses, and I appreciate every writer that's written in, because that's not our intentions right away to just tear down a house and rip trees out. That's not what we're looking for. We want to preserve with the arborist from the City of Edina that helps us with preserving these trees, too. One of the things I wanted to point out is the people that did come to the open house, they were able to look at the existing structure. When they remodeled, I think about 20 years ago, from what I've been told, they combined, basically adding the two lots together by building a garage. Some of the structures, the structure that's on the property now is somewhat difficult to sell, remodel, because there's embasements under both sides of the lot. It's just under the one, and it's somewhat of a struggle. But nevertheless, that's neither here nor there. We're here for a subdivision, but I'm open to any questions and any concerns with the community. This would be our 14th property we've assisted on in Edina. We actually were on one of the lot splits that were approved, the subdivision on Ashcroft, 5825 and 5829. So I'm familiar with the process and the people, which has been great. I like their feedback, and I've called, except for one person, I was able, I called everybody and left a message, or spoken to every writer that's contacted me with concerns, because I want to make sure that I'm transparent. So that's all I have. Any questions at all?
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Sue.
I wonder if you can speak to how you might handle that 10-foot easement that the city is proposing on the north side of the north lot?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm very familiar with Concord and Ashcroft. In that area, there is actually a very low, low area of water that will sit when it rains, and City of Edina put in a sewer line behind 5925 Concord. It's in the backyard. I also own that property. And there is a drain that, because on this property, on Ashcroft, so you do have to have that setback. So in order to accommodate a normal 6-foot, right, Carrie, I think it's 6-foot setback, it's now 10? Depending on the lot width approval. It's a smaller footprint property, which makes the house more affordable for the next homeowner that's looking to buy. So it's not going to be a 4,000-square-foot house, maxing out the square footage like you'll see with a lot of the homes in the area. This will be around 3,300 to 3,600 square feet.
So you essentially get, instead of a 50-foot lot, it's almost like it's, well, if you just take that right out, it's 40-foot lot, and that doesn't even count the setback on the opposite side. Is that right?
Correct. So it's similar to actually the setbacks that are on the corner lots on all of the properties in Edina. You have the easement setback because of utilities.
Would you envision building a smaller home in the sense that it might only be a one- or one-and-a-half-story? Because that's a housing type we're really lacking a lot, sort of, you know. You know better than me. But one of the major, well, I won't get into comments, but would that be something that you would look at?
Absolutely. We're custom, and depending on the client. And I wanted to let the writers know, for every letter we've received with concerns, we receive a contact of a new homeowner looking to actually obtain a property like this. And it's, there is a need for ramblers. There definitely is.
I have seen the homes that you've done over in Blaine, and I just think, oh, my goodness, that's what we need, is sort of those one-and-a-half-story, one-story with the hip roofs. So could you see something like that potentially, maybe, in this area?
It would work, maybe not in that lot, the lot next to it, because you have a little bit more square footage to work with, with a rambler style. Absolutely. There's a lack of ramblers in this area, and that's a very high demand, because just because you grow old doesn't mean you want to leave and sell. You know what I mean? You might want to have the functionality of that home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I looked right.
I didn't get my hand up, test him. Just a quick question. I understand there are a number of mature oak trees on the property. Do you have plans to preserve any of them? Are you able to save any of them within the footprint of construction, or do you envision a number of them coming down?
There, when you look at the survey, the existing homes, which aren't determined yet, it does show four of them being excavated. Of the 14 homes that we have scraped and rebuilt in Edina, we've only had one tree actually die after, that we've preserved. And congrats again, the arborists here is amazing. They really do hold us accountable, make sure, we hold the subs accountable to make sure we don't drive in the roots. And unfortunately, we have a lot of winter digs, okay, and that costs money, but it also preserves the trees, because you can drive on the roots accidentally, even if it's not on purpose, because the ground's frozen, you're not damaging them. So we've actually been very successful with preserving trees.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So this is a public hearing, and so you can come up to either one of the podiums, and you get three minutes. So just kind of keep an eye on the light. When it turns yellow, start to end your discussion. So whoever wants to come up first, go ahead. Just state your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Paul Lang, and I live across the street in one house over at 5917 from the proposed lots. One of the points that I wanted to make is that ours was 1953, 55, somewhere in there. The houses that were put up there on the street were all single-family, maybe grandma, grandpa lived with them, that kind of a thing, packed houses. And over the years, those houses, like ours, have been added on to. They usually went up, first of all, convert the attic, and then a little bit they went back. So those houses were compact, maximum-density houses, one on top of another, just like they were on the map that showed for Concord, 50-foot-wide lots. Driveways running right next to the back door of the house next to you, that's how tight a 50-foot-wide lot is. So I don't know what's going to happen if you put a house that obviously has to have square footage, or it won't sell. It's going to have to go up, it's going to have to go back, and it's going to create, it's going to change the neighborhood, because that's really the only floor plan that fits on that kind of a tight lot. So all the houses are starting to look the same. It's kind of like a Stepford kind of a house, street. So I don't want to see that. I don't want to see the character of the neighborhood go. I'm also concerned about the parking in the summer. Now you're going to have twice as much parking need in the summer in the streets as you do now with a single-family house there. The removal of the mature growth around the house is also concerning for me. Every time you see a new house go up, the trees come down, and they plant a little tree there. That little tree isn't going to provide any shade for decades, basically. So it's going to look like a bomb went off, somebody popped a bunch of little houses in a row, and stuck some trees in there to meet whatever requirements they had to meet. So I just don't want to see that go on in our neighborhood. And the last thing I want to say is, I don't know if I said this or not, but you're doubling the amount of driveways on the property that's there now. You're doubling the hardcover, basically, if you want to call the footprint of the house, two houses now, two driveways now, and everything is going to look the same. It's basically a garage door where you walk around the side to the front door of the house. That's the common floor plan that we see. That's about it. So.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? And while you're coming up, we will mention that we have received all of the correspondence, too, so.
Hi. I'm Jennifer Lee. I live at 5921 Ashcroft. I used to be in 5929 Ashcroft, but I moved next door. I sold it to a builder, and it's a double lot. It faces the park behind it. And so there's one brand-new build on 5929, right across from the proposed. Putting the two houses there, I think it's just going to be out of balance. You've got this lovely, right in the middle of the block, where you've got these two double lots across from each other, and it's a nice balance between it all. At 5929, I was in the original 1918 home in that neighborhood, so I've seen the original abstract. I know it was planned, and I know the rules and the regulations. I don't think we want to go back to that. But there is a nice balance there, and I would hate to see that leave. There's also a corner house on that block that was built in the 20s, and that's on a double lot. Behind that is the two new builds that they did a few years ago, and really, they are so close together that they could reach out and shake hands with their neighbors through their windows. It doesn't look good. I wish I'd taken pictures, but I didn't, unfortunately. So the other thing, the mention about the trees. So on my 5929 house, there were beautiful oak trees on the lot. The construction is just too hard on it, and after three years, she spent thousands of dollars to, one, protect one of the oaks, and then eventually had to take it down anyway. So I understand, it was a winter construction at the same time, so the trucks were going over in the wintertime. I don't think that makes a difference. It's just too hard on them. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Jason Abbleitner. I live at 5916 Ashcroft Avenue. First of all, I would agree with what everybody said about the house. It's a very nice house. It fits into the neighborhood nicely. So we like the house, and we would like to see it. fits into the neighborhood nicely. So, we like the house, and we would like to stay. But in addition, it's been a bit of a difficulty for my house, 5916, because we've had two new houses built on each side. It's really increased some of the problems we've had with water and drainage and getting rid of our water. In addition, when the house was built at 5920, there was kind of specific, say, damages to our house from the construction. We have a cement patio behind our house. When we excavated that house, the dirt kind of sagged, damaged the concrete. And we're still trying to resolve with the builder the damages for that construction. So, it can be kind of a hardship on the neighbors, just more stress on your house, more stress on the property, more water, and also just damages to your property and to your lot. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Patty Crater, and I live at 5924 Ashcroft Avenue. I'm just to the north of the proposed subdivision. And I have lived there 17 years. And not to repeat what the previous speakers had said, which I agree with all of it, but we love the aesthetics of our neighborhood, which is slowly beginning to change. We have four new builds on our block right now, as well as a remodel. And I do understand the need for that. There's probably 20, I think there's 20 homes on our block total. And what we hate to see is that every small home, which it seems like there must be a need for, as you had mentioned before, Susan, just the style of the one-and-a-half-story, those are slowly but surely being picked off. Currently, the home to the north of me is brand-new, also built by NR Properties. The home to my, directly to the west, also NR Properties, and now to the south. My only concern is my house is a one-and-a-half-story, and I have so far lost, basically, sunlight, for one thing, because it's so much taller and deeper. And now the proposed lot just to the south, if they do go with the current plan for the, like, the foundation, it goes an additional 20 feet from where it currently is now, back, which goes long past my house. Also, again, the very little sunlight that I get is also going to be compromised. Speaking once again about the water, this is, of course, personal. When we moved into our home, the water situation was awful and not disclosed. And so, we learned the hard way. And since then, Edina has put in the large drainage system between our 5924 and 5928. And definitely, it has improved. But we're kind of a low point. The house directly to the west behind us, as well as north and south, we always had the very swampy, swampy area. So, I am concerned, even if they say it should work, my very big concern is will it work? And also, because the area, again, the lot to the south, is still swampy. So, when we've had excessive rain, that strip where, and I know they're looking at a 10-foot setback in that area, where the big drainage is underneath, it still gets quite squishy and wet. You can always tell. It never seems like it fully dries. So, it does concern me, kind of being boxed in by the larger homes with more hardcover, what that's going to do for water for me. So, it's mainly, it's the aesthetics, the water, the sunlight, and then, again, the trees. We're losing lots of trees, and our neighborhood's changing.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Perry Crater. I also live at 5924 Ashcroft Avenue, and have been there 17 years. As you see, maybe our neighbors have been there for that long as well. To repeat a little bit what my wife just said, but, and I think there's another variance that should be discussed or brought forth, in my understanding, is the size of this house next to us to the south. If I read the plans right, it's 49% ground coverage. And is it not correct, it should be 25% is the maximum? So, when you think about your PowerPoint presentation there, Carrie, where it said, average lot size, 8,000 square feet, these are going to be like 6,900 square feet. You look at the size of the homes that are going to be put on this, I think what we're all saying is very much going to compromise that lot. And it's going to be overbuilding and be very large and out of place in the neighborhood, and take away to what my wife said, the light in our house as well. So, very large concerns around that. And I think that's also a variance that should be considered, if it's not being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Michael Dubois. I live at 5936 Ashcroft Avenue. I'm here to speak for my mother, Levon, who owns the house. And the tree coverage is our bigger problem in everything, that we have a large oak tree that sits between our property and the construction property. He says that they've been able to save trees. They're all in the backyard. As the construction comes through the front, they compress everything, killing all the trees in front. So, what minimal is left is in the back. This would be on the side property, which would be in the tracks of their tractors and everything. And, you know, they're coming, it's our tree. Now, if they would kill it, who's responsible? My mother would have to have the tree removed at a large cost. He gets to go home with his profit. And I just, you know, we just need a little bit more protection of the trees that are out there, already out there. And I don't know if this is the right place for this part of it, but I do want to bring that up for her concerns. So, it's, it just, if he can, if something happens to the tree, it's a large number. It's going to be stuck between two houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Bringing it back to the Planning Commission for discussion, comments. Go ahead.
So, I always worry about these, what could go in. I don't think the, what's there, the proposal isn't to keep what's there there. The proposal is what could go there. Sorry, this is all getting very hypothetical, so I apologize in the way I'm talking. So, if you look at this lot as it is constructed today, as this double lot, you have approximately a 3,400-square-foot building pad you could put in. And I always worry, when I see a big double lot in this neighborhood, that a big, big house is going to go into that lot. And that, to me, seems almost as damaging to a neighborhood as having two smaller homes closer together. And we've seen this kind of go back and forth, and we've had, certainly had streets in this, in the city where there has been this intermixing, where you have a number of the smaller 50-foot lots, and then you have an interspersing of very, very, very large houses. And I don't know aesthetically what is better. But there's nothing to prevent that lot from being left as a double lot and having a very, very large, I mean, I think you could probably get three stalls, 7,000, 8,000-square-foot house could go into that lot, and it would not need any variance. It's just given the way it's laid up, the way the lot sits and the setbacks. So, that's what weighs on my mind. Which would be more impactful for a neighborhood and more damaging to a neighborhood would be two reasonably-sized houses or one gigantic possible house. So, I struggle with that every time we see one of these. How would I feel if someone came into my neighborhood and put in, I don't like to use the word McMansion, but that's kind of the visual I get when I see a lot like that. Because if you're going to go with a double lot in new construction, you have to get to a certain price point to make it work, and that leaves itself to a lot of square footage.
Carrie, any comments, or?
No.
Okay.
Well, I would find, for myself, it would have been very inconsistent to deny this concerning our actions, in fact, very recently. And we've, the idea of whether, you know, we've looked at almost the exact same situation, and the neighbors were for it, for whatever circumstances that was unique to that one. But here, maybe not so much. It's an issue of change. I think that's what, it's uncertain, as Todd was. I'm not sure that people would be much happier with a single, a large, single family, I mean, a large, single building versus the two. But consistent with how we have found and acted, and with what's been presented to us, I think I find I will have to support this. Thank you.
Anyone down here have a comment? Go ahead, Sue.
This is interesting, as always, whenever we get this applicant, these types of subdivision applications. Keep in mind that a subdivision application can be made without requiring any variances. So, because this does require a variance, I kind of see it in a different category. We changed our ordinances to allow greater sideyard setbacks. And that actually didn't, and greater lot sizes. So, generally, we no longer have 50-wide lots, 50, I think 75 is the minimum. So, but, so what do we do when we're stuck with something like this, where we've got existing lots that are 50 feet wide? I think what we're seeing right here is that the 50-foot-wide lot is actually outdated and irrelevant for today, but we're stuck with it. The reason I say that is because what you're seeing is these homes being torn down, and very large homes going on them, taking up as much square footage as possible, so thereby increasing our hardcover area. And there is no place else to get the square footage but to go up. So, I drove down these streets, and it's true, the access to the sky in the daylight is disappearing rapidly. Now, if every house were to be torn down and everybody to come up, then I could say that it's in an equal position. But I think as, being on the Planning Commission, we have, at this point, have to look at this parcel as a unique application, which we should. I am not concerned about precedent, because, as I said, every one of these things has to be looked at individually. There are no two parcels that are the same. What we have to do as planning commissioners is to look at some of the goals and tie it back to sort of our comp plan, our vision. What's the vision for our neighborhoods? We are, we take a lot of pride in the character of it. And I think what we're losing is character. We have a hard time defining that, but I think all of us know in our gut that something is changing. So, I do believe when residents come out in force from the area, they probably do know best, in terms of just the character, I'd have to say. So, I'm not concerned about precedent. I think we can look at each one individually. And I also am thinking about that idea of a large house on a large lot. That is only if you assume that this is a tear-down. And I think it was pretty well established that this is not a tear-down house. This would not in any way be difficult to sell as it is. It was recently renovated, and it puts it at a price point that we don't have very many homes with that size lot, those amenities, at that price point. So, I don't generally think of it as a tear-down house. I think that there would be a buyer that would be, would love to have that house at that price point. So, again, that, to me, it's not about weighing, is two smaller houses bigger than one big McMansion? I think it's unlikely that that's really the two things that we need to compare. It could be, but I think at this point, because the house is in such good condition, I think that there is actually a market for that. So, in the end, I think it goes back to sort of that 50-foot variance. If the main point of the staff report is, is that this person is just trying to put it back the way it was, well, the way it was is kind of irrelevant. We don't ever want to have 50-foot-wide lots again. We would not permit that. So, it seems pretty clear that, I can't seem to get my head around granting a variance for that, for that reason alone. The other issue is the fact that that pipe is already there at a 10-foot easement. Again, it's going to make for a house. It's going to have to be really tight to the site, very skinny and narrow, and going straight up. So, I did take a look. It is truly a big dip behind those houses, and that is the holding pond for the neighborhood. So, as much as we can hope that plans say we can handle it with the rain garden, I think sometimes we have to individually kind of just weigh the benefits versus the negatives, and realize that if it works now, maybe that is something that's good for our city. If there are trees now, and we can't seem to get them replaced, maybe that's something that's good for our city. If there's only so much lot coverage now, maybe that's something that's good for our city. And if that's the case, then does it really merit a subdivision split? Would that really benefit our city? So, I think that I am not going to be able to actually support this subdivision request.
Great. Any other comments down here? Go ahead.
Well, I think this is a very interesting one in terms of, in terms of some of the issues we've dealt with over the years, and some of the issues we're planning to deal with over the next couple of years. Before I get into that, however, I have a few further questions that have come up. First of all, Carrie, the engineering department looked at, a lot of issues have come up regarding water and drainage. And how can you summarize the engineering department? Are they okay with it? When I read the memo, I read, "The existing site drains to private property to the west and Ashcroft Avenue to the east. Grading for Lot 1 and 2 will closely match existing drainage paths." And then there's some more I want to come back to, and I want to stop there for a moment. Has there been a determination about, will this development increase the amount of drainage? And whether the existing drainage paths will be satisfactory for that?
Yes. So, they can't increase drainage to neighboring properties. So, in the initial engineering review, they're comfortable with what's proposed. They look at it in much more detail when we have an actual building plan. Note that they did indicate they'd like to see drainage go to the east as much as possible.
Okay. And that's good, although it doesn't, I mean, really, I think what would be the, what would be true north here would be something that says, "This development does not increase drainage." You know, and I would think that would be something that would be needed.
It's city code. You can't increase drainage to neighboring properties.
Okay. All right. So, it can be built without increasing the drainage to any of the areas?
Correct.
That'll be required?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on. Just bear with me. There's been discussion tonight about how this is a neighborhood that has had some change, and it's a neighborhood of varying lot sizes. I think I wrote down the number of 20 houses on the block, and there are four, basically, new builds and one remodel. And it sounds like there are also, over the years, I don't know what necessarily what remodel meant, that might be a big one, because it sounded like there were all the other, like, expansions that were very popular 20 years ago. Of the tear-downs, which I assume, I assumed that meant there were four tear-downs, do you know, it appears to me that not all the lots on this block, I'm looking for my map, I don't know if I have it, you actually had it. And you had it switched there. Thank you. Like, one of the lots that I heard was a tear-down, and I could have gotten this wrong, was 5929? And so, I'm wondering if, what the lot sizes of the ones that have been torn down, do we know? Have there been, you know, maybe, maybe to make a better point to my question, have there been tear-downs on 50-foot lots?
Yes.
There have?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I could say that with confidence.
Okay. In this, on this block?
On this block, yes.
Okay. All right.
And 5929 is a 100-foot-wide lot.
5920 was a tear-down.
5920, was it? So, okay. And then, so how many of the tear-downs do you think were 50-foot lots on this block?
Well, all the lots on this block are 50-foot-wide lots, with the exception of 5929, 5933, 5941, 5945, and 5940.
Okay.
Note that those three, those three lots, south of 5929-
Note that those three, those three lots south of 5929, that's, that's a case where they took four 50-foot platted lots and turned them into three.
Hmm.
So each one of those is, and that's 75-foot range, 66-foot range.
Okay. One more question for you, and I actually have a question for the applicant. And I think that ends my, the question part of my bull guarding the mic here. It's been, it's been identified that there's, there's an easement for this drainage pipe that's going to make the, probably make the house a little narrower, and that the, you know, that the, the natural result of that would be to go higher. What, what are the applicable height limits on this? Are they different from, with a narrower lot, are there different height limits than there are on wider lots?
There are, and I may look to Chris to give me that max number on a 50-foot wide lot.
Sure. The maximum height would be 30 feet, and that's measured from the average existing grade that's currently there right now. On a wider lot, you can go up to 35 feet, and then actually get up to 40 feet, depending upon how wide the lot may be. But on the narrower lots, it's going to be a, a lower ridge line.
Okay. Regarding precedent, dealing with our past, I think there are two precedents here that are, that are, that I bring, that come to mind tonight. First of all, there was a, there was a proposal on an extra wide lot near Pamela Park a couple years ago that we voted down. One of the commissioners, guess who, said, "Well, you know, if you vote this down," they were going to divide it into two lots, "what you're going to end up with is just a really big house." And we're like, "No, no, no, that's not going to happen." And that's exactly what happened. We voted against it. We voted to not approve it, and I think City Council followed our vote, and then a really big house was built, and they tore down the beautiful tree. So that was eye-opening to me, because I think I and a few others up here thought, "Well, that won't happen." But the, the harbinger of the double wide was correct. The other precedent I have, and this gets, back to, we talk about neighborhood input, which I really value, it's very informative, but it's concerning to me that we had a nice proposal about a year ago from people that wanted to do a tear down in their neighborhood. And there was a few people up here said, and the neighborhoods, the neighbors were in love with it. They were like, "This is great, this is great." And we said, some people said, I mean, I voted for it, but some people said, "No, we really shouldn't listen to neighborhood feedback." You know, and they voted against it. And I just don't think we can have it both ways and say, "We're going to listen to the neighbors when they see it our way, and if the neighbors don't see it our way, we're going to ignore the neighbors." I think the neighbors are informative, but unfortunately, and something, you know, you know, a lot of the neighbors that we see here are people I know from time to time, and it's just unfortunate. That leads to the future and today, part of my conversation. I think one of the, one of the challenges we have on the Planning Commission is applying the rules as we have them and not how we want to have them. We've had, we put a lot of, over the last couple of years, we put a lot of talk into the comprehensive plan, and we addressed a lot of things. And we also developed a work plan to deal with things like lot cover, oh, Carrie, it was mentioned, that reminds me, another question, it was mentioned that lot coverage limits. Is there an applicable lot coverage limit to this?
There is, and at the time of a building permit, we would make sure that there's no exceeding of that lot coverage maximum.
Okay. Because one of the things, I believe on our 20, on our work plan for this year, is to take a deeper look at lot coverage.
It's, it's actually the impervious surface?
Impervious surface.
Yes.
Okay. And to look at things like this. I mean, I'm a big fan of thinking that we need to really take a tight look at the amount of impervious surface that's being added. But currently, we don't have a regulation on that, do we?
We do not. It's just building coverage.
So I feel as a, as a member of the Planning Commission that I can't necessarily always vote the way I want it to be. I have to vote the way the rules are given to me, and interpret the rules as I understand them and say, "That's how we're going to follow it." And then if I think the rules need to change, I need to get it on our work plan, and we need to change it. I was very disappointed this year. I was a big fan of having tree coverage added to our work plan, but it was taken off and put on the Parks Board, which I think has a different mission. Hopefully, we can address that with the Parks Board. But I think the Parks Board vision of tree coverage is much different than what we hear on the Planning Commission, which is neighbors saying, "What's happening to the trees in our neighborhood?" The Parks Board is concerned with tree coverage citywide, which is a wonderful thing, but it's different than the perspective we have. Hopefully, we can coordinate and come up with something. But right now, the developers comply with our tree ordinance, and I don't know if we can deny things that otherwise comply with what our established rules are. I just don't think we can change rules on a nightly basis, unfortunately. Finally, I will say that I think that, I don't want to say that it's changing rules on a night basis, but I think the purview of the City Council is to weigh a broader range. We're an advisory commission, and so we're, our, our job is to say, "We've looked at the rules, and here's, based on our interpretation, understanding of the rules, here's how we advise us to go." City Council has a much broader scope. They can look at what's going to be built there, whether they think it's valuable for the city, whether they think the, you know, they can take into things. Character includes lots of things that are in code and not in code. Our job is to only apply the ones that are in code. City Council can apply the subjective character tests that aren't necessarily codified. And with that limitation, I, I, if, if the rules are the way I want them, I might not vote for this. I haven't voted for ones like this before, but I think as the rules as we have them tonight, I, I think I'm going to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thanks, Ian. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah.
I share the struggle with, that some of the other commissioners have had, and I do have a question for you, Carrie, which is, do you know what the building coverage percentage would be allowed on a lot size like these, off the top of your head, or would?
It looks like Commissioner Thorson would like to answer that.
So that's, it lies about 36, 30, 30,000 square feet. You can go 25 percent, so that gets you about 3,400 square feet you could put the property. Now, owing to the way our code works, if you have a 50-foot lot, you're actually allowed to cover up to 30 percent of the property. Am I?
Right, right.
So even though it's, the lot's twice the size, you actually don't get the same coverage because you're allowed more coverage, higher percentage of coverage on the smaller lot.
Thank you. Continuing my comments, I think that every request is unique, and each one I struggle with in different ways. I take account, community feedback, I try to respect the property rights of property owners and what they wish to do with it. The, the plans for the site, in this case, I think I agree with Commissioner Lee in that there is a variance request in this. If there were not a variance, I would have no issue splitting the two plats, or splitting the plat into two. But because there are variance requests tied to this, I think that we have more leeway as a planning commission to consider impact to the neighborhood, the feedback from the neighborhood group, what potential changes to the character of the neighborhood would occur. And I do consider the character of the neighborhood, and it feels like the potential buildings that would be placed on this if we split the lot would, because of market conditions and the lot sizes and all of the other things that we've discussed tonight, prompt homes that would alter the fundamental character of the neighborhood. And because of all of those things, I still struggle with it. I would like to be able to vote in approval, but I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, yeah.
So I think it's kind of a difficult situation because the neighbors have to live with this, so obviously their opinion is quite valued. But I also think this is an opportunity to get at the quite dire need for affordable housing in Edina. I mean, I see a lot of McMansions come up around my neighborhood and in the surrounding area. And I think having a small Rambler home, I mean, home, there's, there's a market for that, and I don't think, managed properly, I don't think it would be an issue. And it seems that with the 50-foot lots surrounding it, there's, it would fit in. To me, I don't see how it wouldn't fit in. So I, I support this, this.
Variance request.
Variance request, that's.
Good. Thank you. So just to kind of close it out, I'm going to, I'm not in favor of this, and I think it's just mostly because I don't see that it is kind of matching the whole. When you look at the whole mean, median, where we have the average lot areas 88, 100 square feet and 66-foot wide, that's when I struggle. When, when it's all the same, similar around, I don't, but just looking at the surrounding properties, there's, there's plenty that are larger, and, and if we could be guaranteed we'd get this nice Rambler, affordable Rambler, I'd be all for it. But I don't know. You know, I see potentially a large home maxing out that property. They are really tall, blocking out the smaller homes. So I am not going to be in support of this. So with that, is there a motion?
I'll move. I motion to deny these, what are we looking at here? Plumbity plot with variances, subjects to the findings outlined in the staff memo.
Cool. Is there a second?
Could, could I be clear? So the motion was a vote on a denial?
The motion was to deny.
Okay, could you do a roll on that? So a no would be against the denial and an approval?
For approval.
Okay, no would be, okay, I want to make, sure. Okay, thank you.
It's always confusing. So is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Sue.
I, I think I wanted to just agree with that point, that because there are no guarantees on what could be built, we really have to kind of look at sort of what is the market putting out there right now, and we haven't had any indications yet that something else could come along, although I too am very hopeful someone will see that that's a possibility. But I fear that if we just go strictly based on market, we know what, what's most likely to happen there, so.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion for denial and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No, man.
Okay. So, was, is that even? Okay.
Three, three.
Three, three. I don't think we've had a tie for a while.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, sorry. So that's, I'm kind of like pausing because we haven't had that for a while. So this is going to go in front of the council on what?
Ooh.
Sorry. Put me on the spot.
I need to look at my calendar.
Okay. Wait, wait. So the final, the final decision has not?
I believe it goes to council on February?
19th.
19th.
And is it a public hearing again then, too?
It is a public hearing. So yes, it will be at the City Council on February 19th.
And so the motion that they're getting from us is a split vote? So, thank you. Moving on, we have another variance request at 4630 Edgebrook Place.
Tonight, the request is for 4630 Edgebrook Place, and 4630 Edgebrook Place is approximately .4 acres and is located on the west side of Edgebrook Place and east of Mill Pond. The existing home on the lot is a two-story, single-family home that was built in 1935, and tonight the applicant is requesting a variance for a side yard setback to accommodate a proposed addition off the rear of the existing house. The existing house currently has non-conforming setback on the first and second floor, and the proposed three-story addition is flush with that existing wall, which means it would be keeping the same non-conforming setback. The proposed addition is roughly seven by 25 feet, most of which is located outside of the required side yard setback area. The existing lower level of the house does not have living space under the garage or living room area on the first floor. The proposed project includes adding living space under this area, which is in line with the non-conforming setback, and this is the reason the applicant is requesting the variance. The non-conforming setback currently does not exist on the lower level. With the exception of the side yard setback, the proposed garage addition meets all other zoning requirements. There is minor grading proposed with the, with the addition and retaining wall, and the existing and proposed site drainage is consistent and is directed to Mill Pond and Minnehaha Creek. The practical difficulty is designing for the existing home in its present location. This home is located within the Country Club District, and it cannot be torn down, and the applicant is following the geometry of the house in a reasonable way. The subject property is irregular in shape, and the requested variance is minimal. It is not common to ever, every similarly zoned property in the area. Staff believes that granting the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The proposed setback is the same as the existing non-conforming setbacks on the south side of the property. Tonight, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve a 3.4-foot side yard setback variance for a proposed addition at 4630 Edgebrook Place, and approval is subject to the following, or to the findings and conditions listed in the staff report. And with that, I can stand with any questions, and the applicant is also here.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? Go ahead.
This is in the Country Club neighborhood?
It is.
But the rear is not subject to historical review, correct?
Correct. The exists, this front facade of the home is not changing, so this is currently showing what's there.
Emily, could you just update us by memory? Did we get some feedback, some neighborhood feedback on this?
We did not.
No? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Emily. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak?
I'm Angie Wingate from Rayham Blarsen Architects here for the, on behalf of the applicant, or the homeowner. I don't have anything else to add, unless anybody has questions.
I just want to thank you for the renderings. It was very helpful to see. Now, it does look like there's going to be some grade changes. Can you kind of explain that, especially at the back area? Because you're trying to get that window in there, and what's happening back there?
Yeah, yeah. We're trying to slope. There's, there is a walkout at the basement level, and so we're trying to kind of level out some of that under the deck. Right now, there's some landscaping that kind of swells a bit, and we have a note on here saying there might be the need for a retaining wall.
Could you, could you go to the middle?
Sure.
And then can we pull that, that one image up of the back elevations?
Yeah, that's great.
You have to use the microphone, I think.
Oh, here, okay. I see, okay. Thank you. Yeah, so you can see in this middle section, this is the existing condition where it, I don't know if you have this up on the screen, where it, there's, this is what the existing landscaping is doing, and so there is this small retaining wall. It's not rendered as such, but it's, there is some landscaping, landscaping wall there that holds some of that back. We might have an existing photo of that rear. I'm not sure if it's in this grouping.
Not in this position.
Okay.
They have it in their packet.
Yeah, and I have it in this packet, but I don't know how to put that on the screen. And it might not actually, this is not a good picture, so let's scratch that. So I guess if we go back to these images here, the idea would be that we would flatten this out to some degree, and then we would be either putting in a small retaining wall on this section so that we can get windows to this lower level space. wall on this section, um, so that we can get windows to this lower level space. But the idea would be that we would try to do it through landscaping or through, um, something that doesn't need to be engineered or some kind of serious retaining wall.
Okay, I think it's, uh, this property backs up to a creek or something, is that right?
Yep, the Minnehaha Creek, it's on the, yep.
It looks like it's a pretty deep lot, but obviously, and it seems like it's minimal grading, but we'd be wanting that to be very sensitively handled, which I'm sure you're very capable of.
Yeah, yeah.
So, again, thank you for the explanation and the drawings. I think a drawing speaks a thousand words.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Alright, I think, oh, go ahead, Ian.
Um, I think this is, how far from the creek is the back of the house?
I think it's 110. I see that noted on, um, on the report.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Was that it? Ian, okay, great. Okay, I guess we're good, thank you.
Thanks.
And so, this is also a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Bring it back to the planning commission, any comments? No. Pardon? Close, close the public hearing, okay. Alright, is there a motion?
I move to approve the variance, uh, subject to the conditions and findings outlined in the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion?
I just like to say, it's really cool and I can raise my hand and make Todd speak.
Yeah.
I'm gonna use that power.
So, okay, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No. Okay, thank you. So, the next variance, it's the variance night, is at 6,000 Beard Avenue.
Members of the planning commission, the subject property is located at 6,000 Beard Avenue. They are requesting a 2.3-foot side street setback variance from the north side street property boundary and a .8-foot or nine-inch front yard setback variance for the, for a tear-down rebuild. Um, it's considered a new home, but bear in mind that they are rebuilding on the existing non-conforming foundation. So, um, the requests for variances are actually addressing conditions that are currently there on the property. So, it is a corner lot. It's in the southwest corner of West 60th Street and Beard Avenue. Uh, they have a tuck under, it's a little different, um, situation. They have a tuck under garage that enters the basement level. It is a rambler currently. Uh, they will be taking everything down to the floor cap. In so doing, they lose all, um, non-conforming setback status. Technically, they're supposed to, um, now rebuild at our current setback requirements. Uh, the only addition that they're going to be putting on is they'll be infilling this back corner in the back of the home and they'll also be adding a deck. So, really, the footprint of the home is virtually the same with the exception of that small addition at the back. However, they will be adding a second floor above, um, and it will not go beyond any of the, um, existing footprint that's there right now, with the exception of a small front porch, which actually is allowed to overlap into the front yard. This is a survey of the existing property as it exists today. Um, and what you see is that the neighbor behind it that actually fronts Chowin is located closer to the north lot line than the subject home. They're a little over 12 feet away. Uh, the requirement is 15 feet, so that's one of the variances they're requesting to rebuild on that same foundation and then also put a second floor. However, the, the neighbor that's directly adjacent to them is at, I think it's 8.3, um, so they're much closer to that side street than the required 15 feet as well. The other issue that they're running into is that their front yard setback in, on this portion of the house, which is the closest portion of the house to the front lot line along Beard Avenue, is at 33.7 feet. The neighbor adjacent is at 34.5 feet, so technically, they're supposed to be lining their home up with the neighbor to the south or the average on the block. They did go out and do the average because they thought maybe that would be, and it worked towards their advantage. Unfortunately, the average on the block is actually a little bit further away at 35 feet, so they didn't gain anything with that. They just happened to be the closest on the block in the very north corner of the block and it's just the northern portion of the house. So, both variances are to address an existing condition that's there today. The rest of the project meets all of the ordinance requirements in terms of height, setback, lot coverage. It's a, it's a pretty sizable lot, so they're not really stretching the building coverage. They're not even close to the 25%. So, the, this is the existing conditions that they're proposing. You can see that porch addition, which is, um, an allowed overlap into the front yard setback. This is the addition to the back, which does conform, and they also are proposing the deck. This is to highlight, the applicant submitted this to show, um, that the adjacent property that's directly behind it is closer to West 60th Street than the existing home, uh, subject home. And then, if you line up or you look down the street along Beard Avenue, the, uh, the amount of difference between their front corner and the homes along the block is really, it, it looks like they all line up, although, um, they would need, uh, slightly less than a foot variance in order to, uh, build up above this area. So, this is the home as it looks today. They will be adding a second floor. This is the main floor, um, as it exists today and then also as it's been remodeled or rebuilt with that addition towards the back. This is the basement, should've started with that. Existing basement, that really doesn't change a whole lot. They still have that, that rear loading garage. They will be adding to the basement area, again, in that back corner, but the footprint really basically stays the same. And then, adding that new second floor above, which does meet, uh, the current height requirement. So, this is the new front elevation of the home as proposed. Uh, this would be that left side elevation or the south elevation. This is the north elevation that requires the variance. Um, you see that tuck under garage that's existing there. And this is along the corner, um, and then the rear elevation that faces west. This gives you an idea of the difference between, um, the new home and the home that's adjacent to the south. And again, um, the relationship between the house, um, as it's finished and the home that's directly behind it. Again, they show the area view, um, the distance between the two. And then, this gives you, um, sort of a street view from Beard Avenue. It does meet the height requirements, so bear in mind, the request that they're looking for is about a nine-inch variance because this lower wall, um, on the north side, the northern portion of the east side of the house is a little bit too close to Beard Avenue, according to our current code. Um, and then also, that north setback is at a little over 12 feet and it should be at 15 feet, which are both existing non-conforming conditions. The original house did not require variances, so at the time that it was built, it did meet the ordinance requirements at the time. So, uh, the primary issue, are the variances justified? Are they reasonable? It is a permitted use in the single dwelling unit district and complies with all of the ordinance with the exception of the existing non-conforming setbacks that are currently there. The existing non-conforming setbacks to the north and east were built many years ago prior to our current ordinance requirements as there were no variances required in 1953. It was allowed. It's historically always been located, um, in that way and always at that setback. And granting the variance should not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Granting the variance to the north and east property lines will not alter any condition that's currently there. And all the other new construction does meet our current ordinance requirements. Uh, with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? No? Any, go ahead, Sue.
Oh, oh.
Oh, you did say, well, I'll have Sue go first.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sue.
Okay. Um, Chris, I don't know, this kinda rings a bell, but did we ever have this kind of situation where, um, the existing wall was, you know, non-conforming and we actually did have homes bump back to meet the new, um, setback? Are you familiar with that? Well, prior to our ordinance, our ordinance changed, and I think it was what, four or five years ago now? I'm not even sure. Something like that. The side yard setback requirements changed. There was a minimum set side yard setback, but for, um, each foot average, the wall height exceed 15 feet, you'd have to jog in that second floor. So, we had a lot of jogging in of homes depending upon the overall height requirement. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So, it, it has been and we have homes constructed that way. We do have that. We have had, have had that, yes. Okay, alright, thanks.
Just a quick, Chris, um, yeah, you, you pointed out as very clear as though, that issue on that north side, in fact, it's, though it's not conforming, it's still setback further than the home to the west.
Considerably, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I noticed that, I was, and that 15 feet, that's just the standard setback for side?
It's the standard side street setback and it's not uncommon at all in this neighborhood and a lot of narrower lot neighborhoods where the original homes are much closer than that. Some are at five feet away from their side street and they should be 15, so...
I mean, possibly, I mean, the fix would be to move it further south and then where they have, but then that would put it closer to the neighbor. I mean, it's sort of like...
Yes, it would put them closer.
That would seem not to be a good solution at all.
Well, and they're, they're maintaining that foundation. That was the whole goal, is that they wanna keep the foundation and on that side of the house is the garage. And the garage is, all of that is existing.
Yeah, that's fine. Good, thank you.
Just a quick follow-up actually to Jerry's question. Um, the driveway, is the driveway staying basically?
Yes, all of that is staying the same.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak?
I'm David George, I'm the homeowner. I just wanna thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my wife apologized for not being here, she's on a work trip. Uh, we actually went out and talked to all of our neighbors about the project and most of them are extremely supportive. The ones we were able to talk to signed a, uh, a no objection statement, if you'd like to have that, but that's all I really have to add. I'll see if any questions that I can help answer.
Are there any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you. And this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, bring it back to the planning commission, comments?
Um, is the builder here, I guess? I just realized there's a lot of details here, but the homeowner, so could the builder come and speak?
If they want. Do you have a question for them?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening, Nate Olson.
Uh, my question has to deal with, uh, the explanation of tearing down the walls and going straight up and you, someone submitted sort of a justification of the difficulty of something or other. Is that, if you could, my bad, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, what we're trying to do is build on the existing foundation and it's an older home, so it has two-by-four walls. So, as, if we didn't take more than 50% of the walls down, then we could just build, um, the new addition on the second story to conform, we'd have to move it three feet in. Um, but we don't wanna do that, we wanna tear down the old sheathing and build on two-by-six walls. So, in, if we do that though, now we have to conform to the new building requirements. And then technically, we would have to move the foundation in. And we don't wanna do that. So, we're just trying to use common sense and, and actually build correctly. And, but now we're running into this and, and we're applying for the variance for that.
So, you're, you're taking it down to the foundation and you're saying that by, you would not be permitted to build straight up on the foundation?
Right.
You would be permitted?
We would not be.
And that's what the variance is for, because...
Exactly, yeah.
Well, Chris, I always thought if the foundation is there, no? If you remove more than 50% of the wall area, then it becomes new construction and you have to conform with all of the requirements. Okay, regardless if the foundation is left? Yeah, the, the foundation can stay there, but the new first floor, the new second floor, that all has to move in. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and that's what we're struggling with, because we're gonna see a lot of these projects where we don't wanna move the foundation. Um, and so, I can see going forward, we're gonna kinda run into this going back and forth. And we spent a lot of money, um, with the surveyors trying to understand, you know, Chris has been awesome helping us out and, um, but we weren't efficient with, um, with the requirements and then the survey company is kinda confused on what's going on. And so, we went back and forth and we spent, you know, about $3,500 extra dollars on surveys. And as you can see up, um, during the presentation, we also went and got the average of all the setbacks on that block, because it, just across the street on the north side, that block is a lot closer to the street as well. So, um, unfortunately, when we went and got the average of all the setbacks, it's on the block that we're on, so, um, yeah, I mean, it'd be great if, if we could have some type of rule saying if it's on existing foundation, you know, then we don't have to have these, the new construction requirements, but...
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to confirm a few things. You are not raising the level of the front door. It's gonna be where it is now, correct? Okay, so we're no issue there. And I can see here that you're retaining the six-foot, eight-inch basement height, sort of?
Yeah.
So, it can be done, I just wanted to point out. You're going for a typical eight-foot ceiling height on the first floor?
Uh, we're nine.
Nine feet, okay. And then, upper, upper level is eight feet?
Yeah, upper level's eight.
Okay. So, I, I find that all very reasonable and we often get builders here who say, "Oh, we just can't have the basement at that level." So, I'm, I'm relieved to see that there are examples where people are willing to do that. Uh, one comment I would make is that I know that you had made some attempt to stay in character, uh, not to say that two stories out of character, but this street, I drove it, has a lot of rambler. So, uh, this is going to seem really tall and it's also exacerbated by, um, the roof shape. Have you considered at all using a hip? Every single roof there is hip. Even the one across the street on the corner utilizes a hip and it's a two-story. That would really bring down the massing of that upper level, uh, the roof, roof form.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, the homeowners really, really liked the design of that, that house, so no, we didn't, we didn't try to look at other...
Well, I would encourage you to explore that because sometimes it's just showing what it could look like and it, it almost clicks. It's like it just is more in harmony with the overall area.
Yeah, and that's something definitely to keep in mind, 'cause, um, when we did try to go and talk to some of the neighbors, they're interested in remodeling and doing the same thing, so they're, they're kinda waiting to see what's gonna, gonna happen, so...
Sure, yep. And I would say too that, you know, the, because it's two stories, it's on the corner, I would encourage you to do anything you can to prevent that from being, just being a sheer flat face. So, in some ways, I was kinda thinking, you know, that setback might've been a nice feature, actually, to kinda pull it in for undulation and just get it a little more, so it's not just like a sheer wall, two stories up.
Yeah, so we could do something creative with that. The problem is if we did, so if we did bring up the second level from the, uh, so then actually from the front of the house though, then that would look kinda off-center because, you know, you have the first level and then you have the second level and it's only coming in three feet on one side as opposed to the other side. So, that was the aesthetic issue that we're running into. But to your point, you know, we could, on that, if we did go straight up, we could look at putting like a little, little ledge or something to give it a little bit of character on that, on that side. I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that was it for my questions.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move approval of the variance as, subject to the conditions and findings as outlined in the staff memo.
Okay, is there a second? Second? Is any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you. So it got approved. All right, sorry, I was in a zone there. We have another variance. This one's at 7318 Clariden Drive.
Wrong staff report, sorry. So this is, the subject property is located at 7318 Clariden Drive, and the request is for a single-stall garage addition. What they're, they are located on the east side of Clariden Drive, right here. It's a two-story home with an attached two-car garage that's on the north side of the home. This is a survey of the property, and it does illustrate the addition that they are proposing to the north. They would like to have a single-stall garage addition, a single-stall garage addition added to the north. What you'll notice in looking at how the house is oriented on the lot is that it's at an angle. So both of the side walls are not parallel to the side lot lines. In addition, you have a wider front lot line and a narrower rear lot line, so as you go further into the backyard, the sidewalls get closer and closer to the side lot lines. And so what that does with their proposal is that the front corner conforms. It conforms to the minimum 10-foot side yard setback. The back corner, unfortunately, is at 8.7, so it, there is a triangle, triangular portion of that new garage that slightly overlaps the setback. But the front corner is well within the required setback. So this is the floor plan. It's an addition, 12-foot wide addition. They're hoping to add on to the house that was built in 1967 with a 306-square-foot addition in order to accommodate larger vehicles, bikes, recreational items, and other things that you put in your garage. Their current garage is just undersized for their needs. So then this is the drawing of it in elevation for the addition. They have a number of photographs showing the front of their house with that current two-car garage. They have a parking pad that's, that kind of bulbs out beside the driveway portion that goes right to the garage. So it would be a natural fit to put the garage addition in that location. They are at a lower elevation than the neighbor that's directly affected by it. They're at a slightly higher elevation. So here's just a few photos of the existing conditions. You can see that they're sitting up quite a bit higher than the subject property. This is where they would like to have that garage addition. It's a very slight, minimal variance request. They listed a number of properties in the neighborhood, and I can just click through them real quick, quickly, that also have the same thing that they would like to accomplish. Staff does support the request. Granting the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. There are other homes in the neighborhood that have three-car garages. It really is just in the back corner that they're requesting this minimal variance. They plan on using similar materials, and it will be the same color siding and will blend, probably seamlessly, you wouldn't be able to tell, that there has, had been an addition to the home. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chris? No? Thanks, Chris. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak?
Hi, my name's Garrett Grab. My wife and I live at 7318 Clariden Drive with our now four boys. We have, we moved into the property in 2012, but it's actually the childhood home that my wife grew up in. We purchased the property from my in-laws. My father-in-law had always wanted to do a garage addition, and he just had two kids. And so I, you know, as we've grown our family and plan to stay in Edina for the foreseeable future, we're just looking to have a garage that accommodates larger vehicles, lots of bikes, lots of ride-along toys, and have spoken to all our neighbors, in particular the neighbor directly to the north, and there's no concern in our neighborhood. And as we mentioned in the application, three-stall garages are pretty common in our neighborhood. So we're hoping this is, this is something that can move forward. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? No, thank you so much. And this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Bringing it back to the Planning Commission, any comments or motions?
I was just thinking of our missing Commissioner Miranda and how he might vote on this, but I think it's a, it's a good example of when you have growing families, the needs are kind of still the same, even though we're talking about, you know, walkability and less square footage. There are certain needs that families have. So we're going to have these requests. We have the housing stock that actually merits this kind of request, and it will probably continue to come before us, but it seems very justified in this case in quite a minimal, minimal variance. So I definitely can't see why we, I wouldn't support this.
Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the variance, subject to the conditions and findings outlined in the staff memo.
Great. God, you sound like you're on TV or something. Second? Any discussion? Oh, he is on TV, right? All in favor? Aye. Oh, yes. Seriously?
The Commissioner?
I know, yeah. Just not yet. Finish this meeting first. All right, so it got approved. Thank you. So we have another, this is a site plan modification review for 3121 West 69th Street. Chris?
Yes, thank you. So this is a site plan modification. This is the York Place Apartments at 3121 West 69th Street. The original property comprised of an apartment building and two retail buildings. Little bit bigger view of that. This was finalized, I believe, around 2008, so it's been there for quite some time. You can see it's, there's a lot of landscaping, very mature landscaping, and, you know, it's been occupied for many years. This is a site plan. What they're proposing to do is they would like to turn their guest suite, which is basically a room with a bathroom, into a very small efficiency apartment. There's 114 units currently within the building, and with the addition of this guest suite conversion, there would be 115. Now, they met all of the requirements for site plan approval back in 2008. There were no issues with it in what we look at when there's a modification like this, when they want to add an extra unit, which it specifically says in the ordinance that if they would like to add a unit, that it does have to go through the process, and the Planning Commission and Council does have to look at it. But what staff looks at really is, is their parking, and they're overparked according to the original plan. So from a staff standpoint, they still meet their site plan requirements, and we are in full support of it. So with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Chris, are there questions for Chris? Go ahead, Ian.
Sorry, I know I read this, and I'm sorry if you said it. Why does this need approval if it meets all requirements? Why is it coming?
Because it's required by ordinance if they're adding an additional unit to a site plan, that it go through the site plan modification process, which means you get to see it and the Council gets to see it. But they meet all of the requirements, and parking is really what we look at.
Thank you.
You know, that's interesting, because I would think that that is not really a site plan issue. How does it fall in the category of a site plan?
It's listed in the ordinance specifically under site plan alteration. So because they're increasing the number of units?
They're changing the original site plan.
They're changing the original.
They're requesting a change to the original site plan.
So it must be that when the site plan approval was made, it was, part of that was the review of the number of units?
Correct, and the parking, and the landscaping, and everything else, and there's nothing that's going to change with this.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
All right. Does the applicant want to speak? You don't have to, but it's good.
My name is Rick Pialik. I'm the general contractor for the owner, and I'm just here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Great. Are there any questions? Oops, sorry, I don't know what that was.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this is also a public hearing. And I don't see anyone. Is there a motion to close the public?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Public hearing closed. Bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any other comments or discussion? Motions?
What motion do, what motion do we need? Do we approve the site plan modification? I move to approve the site plan modification outlined in the memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Yeah, thank you. So we have a last public hearing, and this is a preliminary plat for 7101 and 7151 Metro Boulevard.
Very simple one to close the public hearings this evening. So as mentioned, this is a preliminary and final plat proposal. This site is located on Highway 100, just south of 70th. This is a look at the site. There are two existing office buildings on the site. It's the former home of the Regis Office Corporation. So you can see there's a building in the front and then another to the back. It was originally plotted as one lot. They would like to just simply divide the lot into two, so each building sits on its own parcel. There's no new development proposed here. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary and final plat. The one condition is because it's now two lots, they need to have shared access and maintenance agreements between the two lots. They've actually already drafted those documents. They would get filed with the plat at the county. With that, I can stand for questions.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Carrie, I mean, so it just becomes Lot 1, Block 1, Lot 1, Block 2, or something like that, or?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And that little rectangle in the center is?
Yeah, there's a little sculpture or?
Okay.
Something there in the middle.
Okay, thanks.
Did you have a question?
Carrie, is there any review, you know, just like this last one, is there any review of parking adequacy for the properties on a separate basis?
There was not.
Does, does there need to be one?
Well, when the project, when the property was originally developed and, you know, the site plan approved, parking was looked at. I'm assuming there's adequate parking there today. I know if you drive out there, there's, although it may not be occupied today, but in its day, when it was full, from my recollection, there was plenty of parking. But I don't know code specific. I didn't look that up.
Carrie, what are some of the considerations we would, we obviously get asked to do this very infrequently, but why would we ever say no? I mean, are there some things, going back to our comm plan again, that here's an opportunity, there's a big parcel here, and they're asking to break it into two lots? Is, what are the things we should be thinking about in terms of our vision for?
Yeah, I don't believe we could say no to something. This is, it's code compliant, the buildings are already there. Some cities require buildings to be on their own individual lots. We don't here in Edina. You can have multiple buildings on a property. The things that we want to protect against are making sure that we're not isolating that one lot, you know, the shared access and those kind of agreements are all in place. But otherwise, everything is code compliant.
And so generally, when there is sort of this lot split, is, can you make a general assumption that it's probably for the purpose of selling off one portion, the property owner wants to do that? So we at the minimum could think that, well, they're going to get developed independently now. Like, right now, the two buildings on there match, and it's kind of like a big office park.
Yeah, so that would give them the flexibility now to sell, sell the buildings separate from one another. If they were to redevelop, you know, tear a building down, then it all comes before us, and we examine the parking and landscaping and all of that.
Okay, thanks.
Just a follow-up. So if I'm reading it right, the buildings are approximately, it says, is this correct? The buildings have square footage of 14,973 and 18,840, relatively equivalent. Okay, so that gets to the, okay. Thanks, Carrie.
I need to recuse myself from this matter.
But who will make a motion?
I'll make, I move that we approve the?
This is, we do need to hold a public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I was, I was, okay, so it is a public hearing. Is anyone from the public would like to speak?
I'm Carl Ganski. I live at 5024 West 70th Street. My only concern, I'm not really, I think this is fine to split the lot, but is that these buildings are basically unused at the moment, and that I'd like to request a traffic study, because that intersection, it gets quite busy, especially at traffic time or shower.
So just to, you're saying you request a traffic study?
Yes.
For the subdivision request?
Right. From what I've read in the newspaper and stuff, is that they expect to do extensive renovations to these buildings and to, that the company that has bought them is, or that's in charge of this, is specializes in turning Class B commercial buildings from low occupancy to very high occupancy. And since we live right next to this, I'd like to see, you know, to make sure that that doesn't really negatively impact the traffic in our area.
All right. So I think, you know, just to answer that, so if they do come through with a, like a site plan or to revise, when does it, when does it trigger a traffic study?
Yeah, if they are changing the use, or if they were expanding the building by more than 10% in square footage, so they've been approved for an office building today with the square footage that's in there. If they simply remodel the space within it, that would not require a traffic study. They could simply go to building permit and move in.
Right, okay. So, so we'll keep this in mind, but we'll see as things progress with what happens there, but thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Did we skip even the applicant being able to talk? I think I told, I think Todd, you messed me up. I was, sorry.
Good evening. I'm Eric Anderson. I live at 6501 Indian Hills Road in Edina, and I am the applicant. I'm a principal for City Center Realty Partners, which is the owner of the property. The property, as Director Teague mentioned, was formerly the Regis headquarters, so all three buildings were fully occupied by Regis. Unfortunately, Regis... Unfortunately, Regis has made the decision to leave our community. They've already downsized. The nine-story building is still fully occupied by Regis. The three-story building, two of the three floors are vacant, the top floor is still used by Regis, and the two-story building is occupied by PCL. What we're trying to do really is just to separate the three because they're already, PCL is occupying the two-story, they're going to operate as three different, separate, independent buildings. Our company does not specialize in taking a building from low occupancy to high occupancy. We specialize in taking buildings that have a vacancy like this and trying to create a value into it by bringing new occupants back into the property. And to answer your question about parking, with the separation, there will be better than four per thousand parking on both parcels. And then I could answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, and I apologize for skipping over you and going right to the public.
It's okay.
Are there any questions for the applicant? No, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So we still have a public hearing open too. Does anyone want to close the public hearing? Unless there's somebody else.
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any other comments?
Yeah, so typically, we do get the traffic study as part of any new development. So that, that would happen at that point. But I also see the point that right now, obviously, if those new occupants can be found, it will probably experience some uptick in the traffic, but probably nothing beyond what was projected for that area to begin with. So, but certainly the city will take any comments related to that. So if you are feeling that somehow things have changed as a result of that building becoming more occupied, I would think the city would be receptive to hearing any feedback on that. So if that's an issue from residents. What's the website?
The general Edina website?
No, the one where they can post comments.
Oh, Better Together.
Better Together, yeah, yep. That's a great place, BetterTogether.org.
BetterTogetherEdina.org.
BetterTogetherEdina.org.
Okay, go ahead, Ian.
Just to cover all the bases on traffic, Carrie, do we have any discretion to request traffic now, a traffic study now? Is that within our, we don't have that?
I don't believe we do. We don't know for certain what's going into that building even.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or motion?
I'll attempt to make the motion.
Yeah, go for it.
It won't be as well done as Commissioner Thorson's. I move to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for 7101 and 7151 Metro Boulevard.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? Any other discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. You did a good job. That was great. Great motion. All right. Thank you. So reports and recommendations, anything? I think maybe just as part of that, I noticed on some of the agendas, we had the link to that BTA, the Better Together Edina. I think, I'm looking at you. Who, you know, we were doing that test? So you're adding the link there. Did anyone comment on any of these?
So my understanding is that we had, I don't have the numbers in front of me, roughly around 35 views, but only one comment on the Beard Avenue variance.
Okay.
So a lot of traffic, but not as many comments this round.
I have a question on that.
Yeah, how, well, how do you see the comment on there when you open up that link?
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
It's not very intuitive. Do, can the comments be seen by residents too? If, like, if somebody posts a comment, when they go there, can they see what other residents have said?
They can, yes. So when they pull the tag to post where they live, they'll write their comment. So in order for the public or anyone to view the comments, you just have to go into each individual variance and it will list all the comments where they live, so everyone can see the same information. And that will close at noon the day before the public hearing. So all the comments closed yesterday at noon.
Oh, so when you told me to click on the actual property, that's because after it closed, the only way you can see the comment is by clicking on that red dot?
My apologies, yes. Yes, that would have been before. So I, I'll make it easier. I'll send an email to everyone as to how to easier view them.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it, you know, always we, we start something new and we're learning from it and well, it'll, it's going to be better very soon, I'm sure. The one question I had about how the process works now is if you look at the map, people put the little dot by where they live. What's the, red is the subject property and the green is where the commenter lives.
Yes.
And it's usually within the vicinity of the property, but I'm wondering how effective that will be if we get some kind of like a major project in Saltdale or something that gets comments citywide? Because then, how, you know, how, how will that be visible? People won't be commenting from the other end of the city.
So at this point, we're using Better Together Edina just for these residential variances. So the proximity is a 200-foot radius of the subject property. So for right now, it's very relevant to use that map because most, generally, most folks commenting will be close to the home in question.
Is the vision perhaps to one day, you have it on the general basis on every, you know, like this, you know, let's just say this York Place Apartments or the Regis site, that was a development proposal, people may be commenting from miles away. Is the vision, that kind of project would eventually be a Better Together commenting tool?
That is a possibility and that's one of the issues that we've talked about in doing that. On those bigger projects, we do have, we do tend to have residents from all across the city that, that, that may come in to testify. So we'll have to cross that bridge at that time.
I'm sure you'll figure something out.
And I guess if I could just comment on that, if it does get to that point, we always can export all the information from comments too. Right now, the scale of the comments and the proximity doesn't really apply, but if it does scale into a larger thing, we certainly can put addresses and something together, I would assume.
All right, thank you. Correspondence and petitions, jumping ahead. Chair and member comments, anything happening? I don't have any. Do you have? Yeah?
I'll just address why I had to leave. I manage the Tronic Pension Plan. We're an investor in the company that's providing financing to that project, so.
Good job.
Just wanted to be involved in it.
Yeah. Anything else? Oh, go ahead, Ian, sorry.
This is probably more of a question, kind of come out of the comprehensive plan and, you know, we spent a lot of time in the comprehensive plan talking about transportation, roads, neighborhoods. And recently, the city council was dealing with a road construction issue in a neighborhood where it kind of seems like the city council's between a rock and a hard place in terms of needing to upgrade the road and, versus the cost of upgrading the road and the, and I'm wondering what's going on there? Or is that kind of a TBD, something they're working on and they'll let us know when there's a deeper plan?
Yeah, that is something the council is, is working on. I'm not sure there would be Planning Commission involvement in that. It's how to finance those, those, those road reconstruction projects.
I, I think, I don't think it's a Planning Commission issue itself, but where I, where I thought it was of interest to the Planning Commission is that we spent a lot of time in our comprehensive plan talking about alternative modes of transportation and there was a lot of community pushback about the importance of taking care of roads and removing traffic. And I think where the rubber hits the road on this one is the cost of roads versus, you know, the cost of other methods. And I'm not saying that I have a favorite, you know, that I would wish to win this race, but I just think it's, it's an interesting data point that when everyone asks for roads and, or, you know, that, it, there's funding challenges and that's how I think it relates. It doesn't relate to any action we take, but I think it relates to something that we've spent a year or two really trying to think through and figure out a future. That's how I think it relates.
And another way it relates to the Planning Commission, and the council talked a little bit about this, is, you know, the larger the lot size, the more that you generally have to pay for that road. So on 50-foot wide lots, you've got a lot more people paying, helping to pay for those costs.
Because the cost of the, the cost of a 500-foot road is the same whether it abuts three houses or six.
Right.
It's the same cost for the road, yeah.
Right. But that's the assumption that if you stay with the current way of, of assessing for that, cities, city where I moved from, they actually just regularly scheduled the roads and curbs for repair every summer. So they'd do a different segment and it's just in the budget. So nobody ever got like penalized. Yes, there were some streets that we felt like, well, who goes down that except the residents? But in the end, it was probably the most fair way because nobody could really complain. Everybody would kind of get equally assessed, same amount. So there's many ways to do that.
You could say people were being unequally assessed that way too, though. You could say that the person with a small property was being assessed at the same rate as a person with a big property in their taxes. They just didn't feel it.
It's like it's always a formula.
Yeah. Well, I didn't mean to raise this issue. I know I really felt that way. I'm listening to myself. I didn't mean to raise this issue to say that I want to know what the solution is or we have a solution. I'm just thinking this kind of relates to the issues we deal with. I, I have confidence that this council and staff and it's gonna, gonna figure something out here.
Did, did you want to like talk about what we got in email today, that article, or, I don't mean to put you on the spot. You don't have to, but...
I'm not on the spot. I don't think I'm on the spot. I just wanted to share it. It was a follow-up. I had thought about the comments of some of the other commissioners in our last meeting that we, and probably other commissions and the council, need to take a leadership role in thinking about solutions to climate change and some of the other issues that we're facing more broadly. And so as I thought about it a little bit, there are a lot of actions that we can do and the comprehensive plan includes some of those, but it feels like other cities within the US or globally are taking more of a lead and, and thinking about it more broadly or taking, thinking bigger, I guess, was what my phrase was. And so I did a little bit of research and it was very surprising to me, but there was an online calculator that Google had and using the satellite view, it will calculate the potential energy savings from the roof surface space that you could install.
Solar panels?
Solar panels. It's ama, it's very cool. And on average, for an average-sized home in Edina, you would say somewhere between about one and a half to two cars' worth of emissions annually by installing that. So it got me to thinking that, you know, as we're thinking about kind of game-changing things that we can do as we're looking at future developments, whether it's residential, commercial, or the city looks at public development, what about thinking about solar? What about thinking about electric vehicle charging stations? And there were a couple of other things, but just as examples, I wanted to share them.
Great, yeah, very. I think that's great and I appreciate it.
Sure.
And we do, like, I know I, the last one, I brought up the drive-throughs and like Minneapolis just passed an ordinance that prohibits them and I think there are things we can do, take the lead. Okay, anything else? Anything from you, Carrie? Anything's been going on?
Well, just a quick update on projects that you have reviewed but have actually not yet gone to the city council. The, the Ryan proposal at 70th and France, they did not go to the city council a couple of weeks ago. They want to go when the full council is there and they were short at the last meeting.
Okay.
And also the Oak Lane, remember the subdivision off of the right-of-way that's there? That one has not gone back to the council for a final decision. The applicant has extended the, you know, our 60-day review period until the first meeting in May for the city council. They're still negotiating with the neighbors on potential sale. So no decision has been rendered on the plat.
Was that from you, Steve?
Yes. Yeah, it's 70th and France.
The city council, they did not look at it.
Correct. They will do the sketch plan review at their meeting next week on February 4th.
What, was Oak Lane the outlet one? The outlet?
Yes.
They call it the outlet?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I had a question, maybe this was, because I missed the work session. This city council work session schedule, was there anything to be pointed out on that or emphasized?
Yes, I don't have it in front of me, but it's the yellow highlight and then, so that's the joint work session with Transportation Commission on TDM strategies. And then there's one, I believe, in August, which is our regular yearly check-in with the city council. We'll have to figure out a topic for that, but...
Is the one August 18th that's in green, it says full session?
Yes.
CIP? Okay, thank you.
August 5th.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I would anticipate it's probably when we're getting into our ordinance work and we'll have a discussion on some of those, and drive-throughs could be one of them, yes.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.